Thank you, Rob. So caller committed the whole meeting to order. Is there any declaration of interest? Excuse me, related to any item on this agenda? Okay, not seeing one. Uh, we have a delegation this morning. We have Dr. Martha Rogers and Peter French. They are going to speak on road safety and complete streets for rural communities. Come forward, folks up to the podium. Welcome. And, uh, the floor is yours. The microphone is, I think staff probably pointed out to you, it's a little button there.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Warden. Good morning, everybody. Sorry, my back is to you. Um, thank you, first of all, for having us here today. Um, we're delighted to be joining you to talk about our favorite topic, road safety. And, um, Peter and I, Peter French and I are members of the Kimberly Safety Group. Um, we have some other members, I think, who have zoomed in this morning, uh, as well. So this group in 2021 developed a discussion paper on road safety in our area and included a number of recommendations that were evidence-based from the literature um, to try and, uh, improve safety in our, our area. So that discussion paper, which is appended in your, was not appended, but there is a hyperlink detachment at the end if you wanted to look at it. We did present it to the county in 2021 and also to Gray Highlands. And we've worked with both groups, um, to implement some of the recommendations to improve road safety. So, um, as part of developing that discussion paper, we took a pretty deep dive into all the literature around road safety and the research. So, um, in October of this year, uh, Gray Highlands asked us to come and present to them about the research around road safety, which we did. And, um, as a consequence of that meeting, it was suggested that we bring that presentation here. So we're here today to do that in a much abbreviated, abbreviated, you might be happy to know it was an hour. So today it's 15 minutes and we'll get to it. So, um, oops, I went the wrong way. It's my, my bad. Um, we all know we experienced that there is a problem with, uh, road safety with speed. Um, the, there's a huge increase in the volume and speed of traffic uh, over the last number of years and particularly since COVID. Um, this is not, we're not alone with this because everybody around the world is experiencing, um, this problem. Oh, I better get this correct. Um, the World Health Organization, uh, reports over 1.35 million traffic-related deaths annually. Nope, that's not. Good thing Peter's here. Uh, in Canada, it's 10,000, uh, serious accidents and, uh, deaths fatalities annually. And this I found to be a shocking report, uh, that in 22, the OPP, uh, reported a 300% increase in cyclist deaths. This is a serious, um, increase, uh, across the province. And here at home, as you, I'm sure all know, uh, Gray Bruce reported 14 deaths, uh, which was up from two and is the highest number of traffic-related fatalities in southwestern Ontario. We have a problem with road safety here, especially with speed. And the county data do still report or support the fact that even where we have introduced progressive speed reduction strategies, uh, compliance with that continues to be a problem. So not only is every death a tragedy, of course it is, um, for people, for communities, for families. But there's also a societal cost to these deaths. Um, it's, it's quite shocking, I think, uh, when Canada has reported a cost of 41 billion related to traffic-related accidents and deaths. Um, road safety is now considered to be one of the major public health issues in Canada and also around the world. And in B C, where they have done a lot of work on road safety, um, they estimate that their annual cost per, uh, for fatalities and serious injury related to traffic, um, related to traffic is $600 million. So, and their research institute has estimated that per death is a cost of $12 million. So I don't need to do the math for you to calculate what 14 deaths would cost in terms of societal costs. That's around 150 million. So how do we face this problem, which is a complex problem? There's no doubt about it. You all know that we do too. Um, but there are solutions and we think that by embracing some of these solutions in its sort of systematic way that we can make a difference and create a different future for us. Because what has gotten us here is not going to get us out. It's taken 50 years, um, to get us to this point where road safety is a problem the way it is. And it will get worse as we see much more growth in tourism and development. So we need to take change, we need to make changes and there are changes that we can make. So here, this is what we're here to talk about. One of the best documents on road safety is Canada's Road Safety Strategy for 2025. There were previous, uh, iterations of this. But in this document, it, um, it calls road safety a human right under the Charter, Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms. I think this is a profound comp, uh, statement and one to really think about. Is this what we really understand road safety to mean? This has implications. In this document, they argue, um, that we need to, uh, shift our pers- perspective from a vehicle-centered perspective on road safety to a people-centered perspective. And this vehicle-centered perspective is something that's been indoctrinated into our brains. We, since probably the 1950s, when the family car became the norm in Canada, we've just seen more and more cars, faster cars, bigger roads, many roads. And our whole focus and understanding of road safety actually comes from a vehicle-centered perspective. But if we shift that perspective, which is what the document is suggesting, and we support this, is to a people-centered perspective, where all people have the right to safe passage on our roads. And this includes vulnerable road users like horses and buggies, children, the elderly cyclists and so on. So to shift, to, to create a different future begins with this kind of mental shift. And how do we do that? Well, this is where Vision Zero comes into play. And as many of you know, I'm sure this Vision Zero has been around for 25 years. Um, it's been incorporated, implemented in Sweden initially, uh, embraced by their government. Vision Zero is not a prescription, and I think that's what bothers people sometimes is that they think it's going to tell us exactly what we have to do every moment of the day. Well, it doesn't. It's really a set of beliefs and principles that can help guide us to think about the future that we want, that is safe and for everybody. So the basic elements of Vision Zero include the, the outside ring of this diagram. One is collaboration. Vision Zero is a highly collaborative process. And the assumption is that none of us can make a difference on road safety alone. We have to work together. So a collaborative planning process and true collaboration. Who are our partners? Who are our stakeholders? Who needs to be at the table? Is it public health? Is it the community health center? Is it, um, driver training folks? Is it the OPP or is it the, the, uh, road designers? All of us need to work together in order to make a difference for the future. So collaboration is really key. Leadership and commitment, um, are, we're all in leadership positions. This takes leadership. So in B C, for example, they've implemented Vision Zero across the entire province. And it's, they've had to take some tough decisions along the way. You know, leading, leading is not always easy. But in a recent survey, they showed that 76% of all residents in B C still support Vision Zero, which I think is an incredible achievement for the leadership team in B C. So leadership is, is critical to achieving a different kind of future for us. And the other thing is that we, uh, Vision Zero means that we commit to using evidence as the basis of decisions, not personal or political opinion, but evidence. And if we are looking to see, find that evidence, we might ask, well, where do, where do you get it? So I'm going to just say, we have found in all of our research, and it's well-known that there is all kinds of evidence around the design of roads. You yourselves have implemented several of those. And when we look at revenue changes, at the bike lane expansions and so forth. Design of the roads, we have lots of evidence. Driver awareness strategies, traffic calming strategies, we have the evidence. There's really interesting research happening in Edmonton, which has used Vision Zero for the longest of any Canadian city around signage and making signage different in community safety zones and schools so that it really does alert drivers to the change of speed. We have all kinds of evidence around safe speeds. We know, for example, that if somebody is hit by a car at 40K, they're eight times more likely to be killed than if it was at 30K. This is why many jurisdictions have reduced their speed to 30 in school zones at least, and sometimes in neighborhoods. We know the research is out there. There is a lot of research on enforcement, uh, strategies from self-regulation, that is telling drivers their speed to policing programs and their impact and to automated speed enforcement. Like it or not, automated speed enforcement has proven to be the most effective, um, strategy in terms of reducing speed and eliminating, uh, tragedies, traffic-related tragedy. The facts are the facts. So there's also lots of evidence around the importance of how do we help safe road users? Because that's part of the element of, uh, Vision Zero. So public education programs, driver training programs, even truck driving training programs, community engagement and public health campaigns all can contribute to, uh, improving road safety. So we have several documents. We have that Canada's Road Safety Strategy, which provides an inventory of proven and promising practices to reduce or to improve road safety. The Complete Streets pro, uh, documents also include a whole inventory. And recently, the Complete Streets, uh, folks came out with Complete Streets for Rural Communities, addressing a lot of the unique needs that we have in our communities, which is fantastic. Um, and also there's a whole document around safe systems approach. In your reference list at the end of this PowerPoint, we also, uh, hyperlinked a lot of other additional resources um, that include evidence-based practices. So when we look at Vision Zero, it's been, uh, taken up by many countries around the world, including North America, Canada and the U S. And we've indicated with this graphic, uh, where it's been taken up across, uh, our country in large and small areas, rural and urban areas. It's not just designed for big cities. And in every jurisdiction, Vision Zero has actually had extremely positive outcomes, reducing, um, traffic-related injuries and deaths. Well, you can read from the graphic. Um, 60 upwards to 70% in Edmonton. That's what they've discovered. B C did an excellent, um, evaluation of the implementation of, uh, Vision Zero across the whole province. It's a great document and it's cited most frequently of all the, in the literature across the world as an example of really good evaluation of, of Vision Zero. So it has proven itself to be very effective, um, and is a great way of helping us to plan for the future. Of course, nothing happens immediately. It's taken us a long time to get here. But if we shift the lens and, and take and use Vision Zero as a guiding principle for the future, we can create a different kind of future for ourselves. So we thought we'd just play with the idea of want something that you're encountering, um, and look at it from some of the principles I've just talked about. So if we look, think about parking, trailhead parking, for instance, um, we might say from a, from a vehicle point of view, vehicle-centered point of view, we might say, what are the questions? Well, um, how big is the parking lot? How many cars might be able to be included in that parking lot? Um, are there any revenue generating possibilities and so forth? But if we shift the lens to a people-centered perspective, then the questions become different. It's about the people in the car, the families, the children, the dogs. Dogs, not the person, but you know what I mean? And, um, and so that means the questions become different. How do those people move in and out of that parking area? How do they access the trails in a very safe way? If we shift the lens, the questions become different. So that is part of it. And the other part we just, um, would be like collaboration. Um, using the Vision Zero principle of collaboration, this means bringing all parties together in order to co-create some of the, the solutions to this problem of road safety. So we know that road safety is a global problem. It is a local problem. And there are proven approaches that we can take. So what do, let's just sum this up. So what we are arguing here today is that based on the literature, we'll take Canada's Road Safety Strategy. If we really see road safety as a human right, then that means we might think about it differently. And if we change our perspective from a vehicle-centered perspective to a people-centered perspective, that starts to ask a whole lot of different questions. Take a look through, drive through a new development around here. What you see are roads and driveways. But if you take it from a people's perspective, you might ask different questions. How are children getting around to visit one another? How are they getting to school? How are parents with, um, strollers moving around that neighborhood? How are there bicycle lanes? Are there sidewalks? How are people getting into villages and towns, maybe not even having to use the roads? When we shift the lens, it changes the questions and that's what we're suggesting. By embracing the principles of Vision Zero, it can be a guiding sort of north, north star to help with planning for the future, um, without being a prescriptive approach. And finally, if we embrace and, um, evidence-based decision-making and planning, then we can change the narrative. We can change the future and we can create a future that is safe for all people um, and is healthy and vibrant.
May I add? One of the questions that inevitably comes up is how we're going to change all of these roads all at once? Because it sounds as if everything in fact needs to be adjusted. And the answer is you don't. What you do is tackle them project by project. The capital plan says Gray Road 30 is up for repaving this year. Wonderful. At this point, I'm not sure where you are in your planning process on that particular project. But if the option comes up, you would look at it and say, is there a chance to look at Vision Zero? Look at what's planned for Gray Road 30. Don't amend the whole thing. You're priming. You're going to do it. Please proceed with that part. But can you in fact add a bit here and there to make the road safer? When you start to add this other land that says it's not just a guy in a car or a truck using the road, it is all these other pedestrians. And Gray Road 30 happens to be a bit of a sensitive spot for us because there are a lot of people coming and going to the Kimberly Forest. And if they are going to access that, then the road safety now needs to include them as a factor in the decision process. Do you automatically redo all your roads? No one has to pay for that. That's insane. But as capital projects come up, you start to add this additional lens to the planning process to start, as Martha said, start asking questions. Well, what about the people who do this? What about the people who, the people who? Oh, we're not asking a lot of questions about those people now, but we should be asking. And as, uh, tourism picks up, development picks up, for better or for worse, our area has been discovered, quote unquote, discovered. The good news is we can do a lot of neat things because of that. It's a lot of opportunities. The bad side, it comes at a price. Vision Zero says accidents aren't inevitable. When you plan roads with Vision Zero, you say, people don't always do it. They're told. Poster board. Um, so what you do is you allow for human error. You start to factor in elements to the design and structure of a road system to account for some of this. Thank you. Can you stop everything? No. Can you mitigate? Yes. And that's the whole point.
So. Uh, Warden, we'd be happy to, uh, respond to any questions or comments, uh, at your.
Well, thank you very much, folks, for the presentation. It's very interesting. Are there any questions? Counselor McQueen?
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden, and, uh, thank you very much for your presentation. I know you presented at Gray Highlands Council as well. A couple of things, um, I know from the years I've been around county council, one of the, I think, the big improvements that I may mention is for its paved shoulders for our county roads. It gives a place for walkers, pedestrians and, uh, you know, cyclists. These are dedicated or more of a dedicated area. I gotta be careful that are called cycle, cycle lanes or bike lanes are called paved shoulders, right? So there's a reason probably for that as well. I just heard on the news just the other morning, the city of Toronto, which has adopted Vision Zero, uh, they had snow. And there's a lot of cyclists that use bike lanes in Toronto. And the big issue that they were having that morning is the snow on the road. And, you know, so there's, there's, we have dedicated space for those particular users, but the problem was is it's problematic because there was snow on there and people still have to do their thing. Just recently, last night, uh, our Great County Federation of Egg meeting, um, I raised the point and we had good discussion because we have a number of users on our, on our roads, walkers, cyclists in the horse and buggy community. And just unfortunate, just recently, uh, there was an individual that was, uh, killed. And we talked about how can they be seen or better seen? Because half our, half our year is in the dark when we're driving because it's, you know, dark at five o'clock. And, uh, you know, one of the things we talked about is the MTO stickers on the horse and buggy, uh, you know, to be seen at night because if they go through and you can't see them, you know, and I know, I don't know through an MTO how that's a standard on trailers and I think, you know, tractor trailer. Anything on the back, you have lights, you have lights and you have marker lights, but some vehicles don't have any lights. And I've noticed the horse and buggy community. And so is there a way to improve that? But I've noticed on a number of individuals who do cycle a lot, they have a little flashing light. And I think one of the, with regards pedestrians and, uh, is to be seen. And I don't know if there's something that can be implemented in the part of being seen. Just this past Halloween, we had a local community group in, uh, Virginia. It was local sponsorship to create armbands for the kids going out for Halloween to be seen because they use those roads. So I, I just wanted to say that, um, you know, certainly there's many factors of, of road safety. But I, I know from a person who drives and drives at night, you know, it's hard seeing somebody in the road in the dark if they're not to be seen. And, you know, you see that all the time. So I don't know if there's something on that aspect of whether, you know, and I, I mean, common sense would say if you're going up to walk, especially at night, is to wear reflective clothing or something like that. But I don't know how we can instill that, that, you know, we need to do that more. Right? And, uh, so, thank you.
I'll let Martha go first.
Yes, thank you. Um, I just want to relate this, uh, Mayor McQueen. I just wanted to relate this back to the Vision Zero diagram because creating safe road users is part of the, part of it. And how we do that is, um, it may involve creating a, a committee on how to do this. It may mean going to, um, some of the Mennonite churches and talking about with the elders, talking about how to improve this because it is a serious issue. But how to, how to help support and develop and build safe you, road users is part of Vision Zero. So if we look at the whole model, that would be a strategy that we or the county or the municipality could take on.
May I add? One of the things is that when you start, as Martha said, when you start adding these lenses to your questions, you suddenly have new challenges. True. Collaboration, not always easy. Leadership and commitment involves decisions people don't like. Evidence-based devil, I don't really, you know, whatever. Guess what? The reality is that when you start using these other lenses and you go through the work, and I'm not going to suggest quick organs. You will start to see opportunities. Perhaps it starts with education in elementary and high school so that kids are taught the need for road evidence, lights, armbands, something that allows them to actually move around on the side of the road and be seen by car headlights instead of being hidden. Maybe it is that you go to the Mennonite community or any other community for that matter to engage them and see what they say. Wonder, I am a designer. And I learned that the first thing you do when you come up with a design is not the design. The first thing you do is a hierarchy of needs. What do you actually need to solve? What is most important? Well, Councilman McQueen's version of, I'm just using an example, has a certain priority. Warden, you have a different priority. Nelson, different one. Suddenly there's a bit of conflict. It doesn't mean you can't address it and solve it. It does mean that you're aware of all the different perspectives. And the solution at the end addresses all of that, not just one aspect. Near the beginning of the presentation, it said, what got us here won't get us out. And nothing happens in isolation. To your point, the reason there is an accident on the road is that a number of variety of problems all gel at that magical moment of disaster. When we start to take it apart and understand all these different points of view and the different lenses? Yes, it is a more complex perspective. Yes, now we're seeing the whole thing and we needed to have seen it all along. And when it's not in isolation, you realize that the education of the users, to Martha's point, and the attitude of the users. Why are people speeding when they know they shouldn't be? I don't know. I wish I did. If I did, I would have freely shared. But the reality is that we have to try to address all of these different aspects. When you have a hierarchy of needs established through all of these lenses, not just where do we put the cars and how do we get them through faster? Then you start to come up with a holistic perspective, which is essentially the foundation of Vision Zero. The other thing to your question about the winter, all these jurisdictions around the world are using Vision Zero. Wonderful. Learn from them.
Sweden.
Edmonton has snow. Sweden has snow. All these places across Ontario and Quebec have snow. Is there a singular, simple answer? I'm willing to bet the answer is. And I'm aware from reading the old trailhead study that it reinforces that snow plowing is costly and problematic. And it costs are going up and your budget's not. Therefore, is there a problem? Yes, I'm sorry, yes, there is. I spent many years working in advertising and my clients had budgets and we always said, oh, because the grand design and the budget had to be married. And the budget didn't shift much for good reason. You're in the same boat. So learn from the others. You don't have to recreate the wheel. You do not have to do all the homework yourselves. Others have done this. Is this constantly evolving? Very much so. In the same way that we're having this conversation here, so too are places all across our country. And now we're up to our necks in winter. We are reminded of the penalties that winter brings. Can we solve them? Well, I think we can. I believe we can. They won't be perfect. Back to the hierarchy of needs. Budget says I need this. Road safety says this. Pedestrians say we need this. Typically, your task, I don't envy you, is to resolve that. And it can be resolved. As a designer, having conflicting needs is normal. That's a normal thing I face every day at work.
Okay, I'm gonna stop you there. Thank you. No, that's all right. Thank you. There's a lot of information here for sure. Uh, Counselor Matrasov, you have a question?
Thank you, three of the Warden. Um, thank you very much for the details of the presentation. Uh, because you did touch on trailhead and the, the congestion that can occur, the safety issues that occur when there's roadside parking, either legal or non-legal parking on road sides. My question through the Warden to the deputation, uh, delegates this morning is what kind of strategy or approach have they taken to look at this on a more regional basis? I know the focus is very specific to a county road, but it's not just a county issue. It's not just a municipal issue. It spans to a provincial issue. We have three provincial areas, three provincial lands in our own municipality that cause issues on, on this particular topic. And I know there are more areas right across Gray County. So what is the approach that is going to be taken rather than specific, moving on from this very specific focus about Gray Road 30 to, um, to breaking past those silos? Because if people see congestion in one area, one trailhead, then they should move on to another one that's available. So it really has to be looked at with a much more regional lens. Thank you.
Through the Warden, thank you very much. I, I think the actual, I don't think there is an answer. I think collaboration is how we find the answer. And that means bringing all people together who have an interest and perhaps even partners that we didn't even think about before. It could be businesses, ski, the ski clubs, um, who already have great parking. Um, it could mean a lot of different things, but there's no way. And there, people have to come together to co-create the, the, the future and to resolve the problem. It, it can't be done just by the county or by the municipality or by the province. We all have to work together and that's the only way to move forward. I know that, um, uh, Deputy Mayor. Deputy Mayor Nielsen was also mentioning, uh, the fact that, uh, there's the deputation going to the conference. At the MTO conference requesting some funding for Vision Zero, um, project implementation. So that is one way that like we need to engage the, the province as well. Um, there are many jurisdictions, uh, pertaining to roads. We know that, but nothing can really be resolved unless we actually come together and, um, and collaborate, authentically collaborate.
May I? My apologies. May I please? Thank you. Reference. The Blue Plan Trailhead Study is excellent. I've read it. I need to read it again and again. I would encourage you, as complex as it is, it's thorough, it's good. And it points out some places where further research is needed. It is. It points out some places where there are possible solutions sitting waiting to happen. They are. Is it simple? I'm going to say no. And at a time when people wish for expedient answers, I appreciate this is the opposite. But it is time to definitely go back to the hierarchy of needs. For example. You've got a need here for a Gray Highlands project, a Gray County project, a provincial project. What do they have in common? What limitations are there? What resources are there? Uh, back in the design business again, these are all things that anybody's coming up with solutions is going to have to deal with. And you can. Do I have a quick answer like Martha? The answer is no. But we can tell you the process that will lead you to that. And you've actually got a very good starting point with your own trailhead study. It's not perfect and they tell you where it's incomplete. They know it. On top of this, they were not asked to redesign your roads. They weren't, but Vision Zero can point out other ways to amend roads as those capital projects come up. And you can marry those lenses into your thinking.
All right. Well, thank you very much for the presentation. Good discussion. Thank you very much. Did we have?
Need a motion to receive?
No. Okay. All right. Moving on, we have, uh, the consent agenda. Uh, do we require, require any of those items to be pulled for further discussion? Seeing none, if someone would care to move the adoption of those consent items, Counselor Pringle and Counselor Dickard. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. We have, uh, one item for, uh, discussion here today and decision. Uh, we're going to start. Uh, how we're going to approach this is Randy has a presentation to make and he's going to do that. Then we're going and Kevin is going to, uh, be part of that, I understand, or could be. And then we're going to move into closed session to, uh, discuss, uh. A matter related to this report, and then we're going to come back into open session and at that point a motion, uh, hopefully will be, uh, brought forward. To, uh, give direction. So, um. I would, I was just going to say, would we like a break before we do that? Let's do that. We'll come back at 11 o'clock. Response to the delegation. So Counselor Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Warden Millman. Uh, I appreciate the chance to craft a motion here. Um. Given the delegation we just received, I'm wondering if, uh, I can get support from county council here to have a report come back from staff. Just showing the measures that Gray County is already doing regarding Vision Zero, um, how we're moving forward and, and maybe a way we can, uh, further move forward in that direction.
Thank you, Counselor Nielsen is their second or Counselor DeBreen. Any discussion? Counselor Echols.
The motion, how's that read that we're going to move forward with Vision Zero? I, I just. Counselor Nielsen.
Thank you, uh, Warden Millman, uh, to Counselor, uh, Echols. Moreover, um, a report from staff as to what county staff is already doing regarding Vision Zero principles, implementation, the paved shoulder concepts, the things that have happened in Ravenna and such. But is there, um. Possibility for moving forward is a discussion to have at the county table regarding moving forward with a lens to Vision Zero. That doesn't require the necessarily require the county that every project, every road project has to have Vision Zero concepts. But that you consider that when we're doing all the road projects. Just more wanting to get more information from staff as to how that process would look. How we would potentially move forward. Not that we are, this report from staff.
I guess this may be more towards Pat. Are we already doing all things in Vision Zero?
Well, if I could just jump in there. Ahead of you, Pat, sorry to interrupt. I, I think what we're looking for is exactly that from the motion as to what are we currently doing? Uh, to apply the, the concepts of Vision Zero to our current projects. And are there opportunities to extend that even further? There's, there's no mention or no intent, as I understand it, talking to Counselor Nielsen about committing us to doing anything. It's to see what are we doing and what more could we be doing if we so cho- chose? Am, am I paraphrasing? Yeah. Pat, do you want to add anything?
No, I think that's perfect, Warden. Like I, um, we are doing a lot. We are doing a lot. And I, and I just feel like giving a verbal update just doesn't quite do it justice that, you know, we're, we're ready to bring back a report because we're doing a lot of the Vision Zero principles. And a lot of them have been really effective, obviously, but, um, yeah, we're, we're happy to do that.
Okay with that, Counselor Echols?
I. I guess I, I may be misunderstanding what Vision Zero, is Vision Zero policy a concept? That's basically enforceable or, you know, that we're going down. This path of everything is at Vision Zero or. We're doing what we can with Vision Zero.
And I think all those questions, I think we, in the staff report, we can, we can provide some information on in terms of. What, what are the principles of Vision Zero? How does it work in terms of how we currently apply some of the principles of Vision Zero to our projects? Um, you know, all our projects, we're, we're building in safety is, is, is paramount, um, in terms of. Considerations for all road users. Um, so that stuff that we can definitely provide back to council in terms of how we're. Incorporating some of these principles already in the design and what maybe opportunities, uh, exist to, to go beyond what we're currently providing. This ties into with the delegation, uh, that we were, uh, providing at Roma. Uh, we've been granted a delegation request, uh, through, through MTO. Um, and it's a joint delegation with Gray Highlands and, and the county to, uh, uh, to ask. The MTO to consider, uh, funding or funding grants program to support, uh, uh, principles of Vision Zero. So we'll be able to also report back as part of that staff report, uh, on how that delegation went.
Thanks, Randy. Any other questions? Counselor McQueen.
I think just to add to that, it's, it's looking at a lens that just brings you aware and awareness of how could we. If there's a way or ways of improving road safety for all the users. And I think it's, it's, it's a positive thing and it's a certainly coming back from the report. We can have a further discussion on that as well.
Hundred percent. Okay. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, now. Like, uh, it was indicated before the break there, uh, Randy has a report and, and Kevin is part of that certainly. And, uh. Then we'll go into closed session to. Discuss further. Randy.
Great, thank you very much. So this is a report regarding the potential purchase of lands to construct the new paramedic base in, in the town of Durham.
One minute warning. Very good. Thank you, Rob, and we'll bring the meeting back to order. There's been a request for a response to the delegation. So Counselor Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Warden Millman. I appreciate the chance to craft a motion here. Given the delegation we just received, I'm wondering if I can get support from County Council here to have a report come back from staff just showing the measures that Gray County is already doing regarding Vision Zero, how we're moving forward and maybe a way we can further move forward in that direction.
Thank you, Counselor Nielsen. Is there a second or Counselor DeBreen? Any discussion? Counselor Echols.
The motion, how's that read that we're going to move forward with Vision Zero? I just. Counselor Nielsen.
Thank you, Warden Millman. To Counselor Echols, moreover, a report from staff as to what county staff is already doing regarding Vision Zero principles implementation, the paved shoulder concepts, the things that have happened in Ravenna and such. But is there possibility for moving forward? Is there a discussion to have at the county table regarding moving forward with a lens to Vision Zero that doesn't require, necessarily require the county that every project, every road project has to have Vision Zero concepts, but that you consider that when we're doing all the road projects? Just more wanting to get more information from staff as to how that process would look, how we would potentially move forward, not that we are, this report from staff.
I guess this may be more towards Pat. Are we already doing all things on Vision Zero?
Well, if I could just jump in there ahead of you, Pat, sorry to interrupt. I think what we're looking for is exactly that from the motion as to what are we currently doing to apply the concepts of Vision Zero to our current projects? And are there opportunities to extend that even further? There's no mention or no intent, as I understand it, talking to Counselor Nielsen, about committing us to doing anything. It's to see what are we doing and what more could we be doing? If we so cho- chose. Am I paraphrasing? Yeah. Pat, do you want to add anything?
No, I think that's perfect, Warden. Like, we are doing a lot. We are doing a lot. And I just feel like giving a verbal update just doesn't quite do it justice that, you know, we're ready to bring back a report because we're doing a lot of the Vision Zero principles. And a lot of them have been really effective, obviously, but yeah, we're happy to do that.
Okay with that, Counselor Echols.
I I guess I may be misunderstanding what Vision Zero, is Vision Zero policy a concept that's basically enforceable? Or, you know, that we're going down this path of everything is at Vision Zero or we're doing what we can with Vision Zero?
And I think all those questions, I think we, in the staff report, we can, we can provide some information on in terms of what, what are the principles of Vision Zero? How does it work in terms of how we currently apply some of the principles of Vision Zero to our projects? You know, all our projects, we're building in safety is paramount in terms of considerations for all road users. So that stuff that we can definitely provide back to council in terms of how we're incorporating some of these principles already in the design and what maybe opportunities exist to go beyond what we're currently providing. This ties into with the delegation that we were providing at Roma. We've been granted a delegation request through, through MTO and it's a joint delegation with Gray Highlands and the county to to ask the MTO to consider funding or funding grants program to support principles of Vision Zero. So we'll be able to also report back as part of that staff report on how that delegation went.
Thanks, Randy. Any other questions? Counselor McQueen.
I think just to add to that, it's, it's looking at a lens that just brings you aware and awareness of how could we, if there's a way or ways of improving road safety for all the users. And I think it's, it's a positive thing and it's a certainly coming back from the report, we can have a further discussion on that as well.
Hundred percent. Okay. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, now, like was indicated before the break there, Randy has a report and Kevin is part of that certainly. And then we'll go into closed session to discuss further. Randy.
Great, thank you very much. So this is a report regarding the potential purchase of lands to construct the new paramedic base in, in the town of Durham. Staff have looked at options for location for this new base. And this new base was recommended as part of the deployment review that council had supported last year. After exploring options, the ideal location for the new base would be located near the proposed West Gray Police Services Building, which is off Chester Street and Gray Road Four. Being directly adjacent to Gray Road Four allows for quick access from the site to be able to respond to emergencies. The site is also located near the Durham Hospital. We have previously explored potentially putting it near the new Rockwood Terrace site, but due to some site plan modifications for that site, as well as trying to keep the 20 acres of the rock, east of Rock Street intact for future potentially housing projects. This site still, I think, was, is the preferred site in terms of just, as I mentioned, quick access off to Gray Road Four. Currently, the paramedic services leases space as part of the hospital in Durham. This was built in the mid 1980s. Has some concerns and issues at the moment with ventilation, the garage area, some air exchange, some temperature control. The current building also lacks appropriately sized storage as well as some cleanup areas. The new Durham base is included in the 10-year capital plan. It's scheduled to be constructed this year and as for the approved budget that just occurred earlier this morning, this particular project is, is within the 2024 budget. Staff are proposing to increase the size of this base to help implement the recommendations of the deployment review. This increase in size will provide space for administrative offices, provide for four indoor ambulance spaces, as well as a central storage for medical supplies and equipment. The new base would also have appropriate decontamination and cleaning areas, crew and office area, storage of equipment protecting it from particulate from the garage, as well as improved locker and shower facilities. Overall, the base will be approximately a third larger than probably some of the other bases that are proposed to be built over the next few years. That was originally planned and, and those funds for the additional size were included in the 2024 budget. What staff are proposing is developing a consistent standardized base design. As I mentioned, there's a few bases that are proposed as part of the deployment view to be constructed over the next few years. And so we're proposing to use a consistent design using the Craigleaf Base, which is our most recent base that we've constructed as a template to inform that design. This, the Craigleaf Design meets all the needs of a base. It can also be increased and decreased in size depending on the needs of the community. And the goal is to create efficient and effective purpose-built bases that will better meet the needs of staff and facilitate better response times. We will also look at energy efficient considerations when we're building and designing these bases where possible to ensure that our utility costs are kept low, as well as to ensure that the county's buildings are on track to meet that zero by 2045. Staff believe that by using a standardized base design for all the bases, we're hoping to be able to achieve some efficiencies and savings through reduced architectural and engineering costs. So these are the subject lands that we're looking at. They're described as part of 451 Durham Road West and are located south of Gray Road Four, Durham Road West, and north of Chester Street West. West Gray purchased the 8.4 or 5 acre property in early 2020, again primarily for the construction of the new West Gray Police Services Building. West Gray has done some further studies and analysis on the lands to prepare for the construction of the new police station and to service the lands that are being proposed here today. This is the concept plan that's prepared by West Gray's engineering consultant showing the potential location of the new paramedic base in proximity to the new police station. So we wanted to ensure that can we put all the, the buildings on the, on the same site? And the answer is yes, we can. And so that's the concept plan that's been created to, to show that that's, that's going to be possible. West Gray is also looking at potentially adding some, doing a subdivision as part of the remaining portion of lands outside of the the paramedic base lands and the West Gray Police Station lands, and that's what you see on the screen. These are the proposed actual property boundary that we'd be looking at for the new paramedic base, as well as just a further zoomed in version of, of the base in relation to some of the, the parking areas that would be proposed as part of that. As you'll see on the, on the screen, we're also proposing a emergency vehicle exit only directly off of Gray Road Four. As I mentioned, there's a proposal to have four indoor parking spaces for, for the ambulances. So depending on where the ambulance is parked and who's responding to those calls, we wanted to have quick access if the, if the ambulances are parked on the west side of the building, we want them to exit out that, that one inch, that the existing entrance or the new entrance that'll be built by West Gray. And then the other entrance will be if, for those vehicles parked on the east side of the building. Again, just to get as quick to, as response time as we can to exit out onto Gray Road Four. Transportation services is agreeable to this emergency vehicles only exit. And we'll ensure that that exit is designed as safe as possible, including looking at possibly warning signs and flashers to, to warn vehicles and on for that vehicle might be exiting that's, that access. In terms of planning review, the county official plan and West Gray zoning permits the proposed paramedic base. The boundaries are irregular in shape, as you can see, in terms of the proposed property boundaries. That's to meet the side yard setback requirements in the zoning. All the other yard and lot coverage requirements within the institutional zone can be met, and these lands are currently zoned institutional. There is a, what we call a previously identified landfill site within 500 meters of the subject lands. There was a D4 study that was done by West Gray a number of years ago. It identified no concerns other than if you're accessing surface water within a buffered area. So we can verify the findings of the D4 study through what we're recommending as an environmental site assessment work, just to look at the overall historic use of, of the property, making sure there's no concerns. That's a typical standard process that we do when we're acquiring lands is to do an environmental site assessment. There are natural heritage features in proximity to the subject site, but none on the subject lands. And in fact, the area that we're proposing the, to construct the paramedic base is a previous disturbed field. And there's no natural heritage features within proximity to those lands, and therefore, based on the planning and college's comments, an EIS can be waived. It is recommended that a stormwater plan be completed and there could be additional water quality requirements may be required depending on the draft design. Staff are recommending taking a design build process for this particular project, as well as if it works out well for other subsequent proposed bases. A design build contract is a single agreement between the owner and the contractor, and it covers both design as well as the construction phases of a project. The nice thing is this allows the county to have a single point of contact, which helps to avoid any potential conflicts and disputes between a designer, which could be a separate contract and a builder as another separate contract. So by combining it in one contract, we're dealing one, one single contact and they're working out those details amongst themselves. The paramedic base is a relatively straightforward build. I think Kevin's indicated essentially it's a garage with some space, storage space and some staff space. So it's, it's a fairly straightforward build. The site's generally flat. It's a Greenville property. And from our perspective, it's pretty much ready to go, especially once West Gray puts in the servicing and the roads that are being proposed this year. The hope is that by having a consistent design and tender process for all the paramedic bases, we could result in, in hopefully faster delivery, better quality and lower costs. There are some potential risks and challenges when it comes to a design build tender process. However, we think a lot of those risks can be covered off by having solid specifications and design considerations. In fact, we're using some in-house expertise to do up concept designs for the actual building, and we'll include those in the tender document saying, this is what we want you to design, finalize the design and build. So we're hoping to be able to get from a design perspective at least 80, 90% there. And then they're just wrapping up the design based on some final details. As mentioned earlier, staff are recommending that an environmental site assessment be completed prior to finalizing the purchased lands. Again, this is what we typically do when we're acquiring a vacant property of this size. This is to assess any previous use of the property to ensure that the lands do not require any further work or if there's any potential remediation prior to construction. A reference plan will be required to identify the lands that would be acquired by the county. So we would need to hire a surveyor to do that, and there would be some legal costs in terms of transferring the lands at the end of the day. An engineering consultant would also need to be hired to finalize the service design of the actual building. There is a possibility that the county could use West Gray's engineering consultant that's doing the overall stormwater design for the entire property, for the subdivision, for the police station, and possibly for the paramedic base. That way, all the stormwater works together and we're not creating individual stormwater ponds here and there. It's all one centralized pond. It all ties together. So that's something that we're exploring further with West Gray staff. It's also recommended that an archaeological assessment be completed for the subject lands. Costs for all the surveys, legal fees, the additional studies would all be funded for the project for the budget. And that was already taken into consideration as part of the budget that was approved earlier today. The county could enter into an access agreement with West Gray to conduct those preliminary investigations over have a third party surveyor or consultant going on those lands. It, we just enter into a simple access agreement allowing them to go on that property before we actually acquire the lands. Again, that's just standard process, but we don't actually physically own the lands yet. As council knows, there's a closed session component related to this matter. We will, staff will recommend once the presentation is complete to go into closed session, just talk about the value of the recommended value of the proposed property. As mentioned earlier, West Gray is proceeding later this year to install roads and services for the police station, as well as potentially the proposed subdivision. And, and they can also look at from a road and servicing perspective to service the lands that are being considered today. So with that, it's recommended that the county consider entering into a cost sharing agreement with West Gray for our proportionate share of that, those road and servicing costs. And this would be similar to what we did with the early works project for the Rockwood Terrace site, where there was some costs that were related to the Rockwood Terrace build and some costs that were related to future development. And we entered into a cost sharing agreement with West Gray with respect to that. So it'll be very similar in nature. In terms of financial and resource implications, so the total cost for the new Durham base, including land, professional fees, construction costs is estimated at $3 million. And as mentioned, that, that $3 million was included in the 2024 draft budget or the now approved budget. And this project is funded primarily from reserves, development charges, as well as debentures. So at this stage, staff would recommend now we go into closed session to talk about the value of the land.
Thank you, Randy. Kevin, did you want to add anything before we go into closed session? No? Okay, thank you. So as Randy indicated, we need a motion to go in closed session. Counselor King, Counselor Carlton, all those in favor? That is carried. I was just looking at Andrea here. Did you have your hand up Andrea for a question or no? Okay, good. All right, so I'm not sure who you want to stay, Randy? Or? Yep. Waiting for somebody to swing that door. Thank you, Rob. So we are now back in open session and I can confirm that we only discussed that item which was listed. And it was a proposed or pending acquisition and disposition of the land by the municipality. We only discussed that in closed session. Okay, Randy, did you have anything else to add at this point, or do you wish us to proceed with the motion?
Nothing further to add at this time, and we'd be happy to take any questions regarding what's being proposed and, and the base design. But at this stage, we're, yeah, we're happy to take direction from council.
Okay, so I'm looking for someone to support the motion that was on, Counselor Carroll. You're good with the 150? Okay, so that is the number that will be put into that motion is $150,000. Seconded by Counselor Mackey, thank you. Discussion, questions? Counselor Greg.
Just a couple of questions. It does say in the report, overall, the base would be approximately one-third larger than what was originally planned. It leads back to the comprehensive deployment review recommendations. We did the new build in Craigleaf 10 years ago or so. There, there was, I think, implementation of air scrubbers and various items that some of these things can drive the costs up. I guess what I wanted to know is to be comfortable that we're not overbuilding and that we are recognizing even the vehicles have came a long way in 20 years, let alone 30, 40 years in terms of emissions from the ambulances. So even air scrubbers, it's an easy thing to want to incorporate. But factually, you open and raise the door, you improve the airflow just as the vehicles are going in, they're not running in the bays significantly, and we've got more environmentally friendly emissions than what used to be on the roads three years ago. So I guess I'm just one-third larger is significant. And we still have several other bases that we're trying to plan for in the future. I guess are there, is there a framework to learn perhaps as we embark on each one of these new bases? If there's takeaways that two years from now, we can recognize that we don't have to maybe go one-third larger or we can scale back on certain items.
Randy?
Yeah, and I'll probably look to Kevin to help answer some of these questions, but I think one of the main considerations for the third size larger is, is that because Durham is a central area to the overall county, using this area as a kind of a central storage area for supplies and equipment is part of the reason for wanting some additional space, some additional storage in a central location, but I'll let Kevin speak to some of the air scrubber questions and.
Yes, the Craigleaf Base is approximately 4,000 square feet. And that's what we would have built Durham at if, before the deployment review and then just looking at our needs moving forward around logistical support. Currently, we have storage, no one sound, that services the whole county, but also that base there. We have storage in Craigleaf. Not very, really good access, but it's pretty well full. And we have all our PPE still stored in two shipping containers we pay rent on every month. So we're, we're really at the, we're well over capacity for a place to store stuff. So with the enhancement with the deployment review of that base, it's really that extra third is about logistics storage, half of it for that and then half for administrative spaces, which we are out of as well. We don't have spaces for those as we grow. And then going forward, actually, that's just that base. Every other base will actually be smaller than Craigleaf. It will actually only be the, the main crew area and then two cars. So it'll be smaller than Craigleaf. So, but we, we really do hope to learn efficiencies. That's why we put this in place and be able to work in-house with the architect that we're using within house and learn from these buildings is to look at these efficiencies. Air scrubbers are in Craigleaf, and that was particularly due to the diesel emissions. And now we've switched to gas. So, but I think part of this, some of the, when we go out to tender the mechanical side of things, we will look for those, those guidance about what is required and what isn't. But definitely you want good ventilation in a base. You know, there's, there's still carbon monoxide. And we can't have the doors open. We lose heat loss. We have to keep the bases warm in the winter. So there are some considerations, but we, you are going to let the whole idea, this is to look at efficiencies.
Thank you, Kevin. Any other questions? Okay, call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much, Randy, Kevin. Appreciate that. We have no further closed meeting matters. Is there any other business to be considered today? Nope, not seeing any. Is there any notice of motion? Not seeing any. I have one further motion. Counselor DeBreen to adjourn and Counselor Patterson. All those in favor? That's carried. There we go. We are adjourned. That's carried. There we go. We are adjourned. Lunch is served in the adjoining room. I'm told it is here. Yes, it is. So, uh, enjoy lunch. Thank you.